Good evening. It's like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here. This is hereby given of the regular meeting of the Board of the District of Directors to be held at 105 Fort Road, Port of Texas, July 27, 3:22 at the hour 5:30 Tampa, for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is supposed to be the opposite of the district on July 31, 2022, at 4:30 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Act of Government Code 551-041, 551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum present today in the boardroom. We have Mr. Water, Dr. Lulon, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Donahue. Do we have anyone online today? Starky or not?
We have Mr. Richard Tryer, Attorney.
Okay.
Since Brian's out on vacation, he's zooming.
Okay, and we got word that Starky will be joining the meeting in a bit. May please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invitation.
And Father, again, we thank you for all your blessings, Lord. Just continue to ask of your guidance and our decisions that we'll make tonight. If you will lead us into everything, and we just want to thank you for a wonderful day, a wonderful week that we've had. And we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Who, for record, we have Mr. Starky joining the meeting. Staff, anyone out there want to share anything with public comment?
One of the things I just want to thank the board for sending flowers and food to our services. My dad's passing, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart that you guys support my family in that way. And I wanted to pass out one of these information from the water. It was the second letter of drought management that we need to make sure that we start doing something on it. And I believe we might have some information, updates, that I think my staff, when I was gone, they brought some resolutions in there to make sure that addendums to the personnel. Let me see here. On the water conservation. I think there was one, one of the words I was missing was mandatory. I know that Charles had worked on it. Prior to that, and he redid it and fixed it, correct, making the corrections. One more thing that I wanted to mention, I think there was a some information in the agenda that might have to be no action on it. But I wanted to make sure that we got together as an ad hoc committee with, I guess, two board members. And we talked about it on personal policy. And it's nothing serious. It's just that we want to make sure that we get taken care of. Today, I think we're gonna have to just no, no action. We'll probably guys up, I think, to volunteer for the ad hoc committee. Whenever we can get together, just talk about it and just make sure that we cover that. Whether the board decides on. I respect your decisions. And that's all I have for right now.
We do have one other item, just to inform the board that we have another leak under the bridge.
All right.
It happened when the water got cut off, the pressure from the water plant.
Has to run all the whole thing again?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, it's probably gonna have to rest that platform 24,000, 45,000 in order to take care of it. There's a water leak where it's at.
Same savings opportunity started or received that we executed last time as it relates to safety and water rescue availability. We're going to implement the same strategies to save, I think you saved about 24 grand last time or something if I remember.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll follow the same process, the same procedures.
Dumb question, because I realize the scope of we construct our own platform and store it somehow and assemble it, you know, can we at least look into what that would look like from a storage standpoint, from a construction standpoint?
Sure. So we didn't anticipate it would happen this quick. But we'll look at it again this time and try and get some cost associated with that.
When you guys read that, you also were going to crew to come down and construct it and put it together for you? Do you guys know how to do that yourself?
No, they did it. It was their platform. They take responsibility on safety and all that.
That would be my, we own it ourselves, we don't know how to use it. So.
Well, we did the repairs.
No, 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 I know you did the repairs. I know, just what do you know?
The platform scaffolding, whatever it tails to hang from the bottom of that bridge, big, big operation, and no, no amount of money savings would constantly skip the safety protocol.
So like that much is leaking every moment?
Yes.
We actually made it the.
So now we just have one source of water.
It's under Murphy's law.
Does that conclude this? Or we, anything else to share?
No, sir. The water leak that was caused by contractor at the island this afternoon has been fixed. We're in the process of just flushing out and we've got the water back on, but we need to flush and make sure that everything's okay. There will be a boil water notice going out. Because the pressure did go down below 20.
Luckily, we were able to get it on and businesses are able to salvage for the day.
It's amazing though, because our water line is under like four or five cables. AT&amp;T, fiber optic, other cables that are there, and they didn't get touched.
Well, the internet doesn't ever work so good, so.
Yeah, I got a public announcement. Thank you. So there's an election this year. There's been a lot of conversation about this seat that I'm sitting in and whether or not I was going to do this again, and you guys, it's probably well documented that I didn't want to. But after further thought and collaboration, you know, prayer, talking to my wife, decided to run. So we'll see how that, you know, plays out, but it's been an honor to serve this district, you know? I don't think I did it perfectly. As a matter of fact, I know I didn't, but I think I've been a small part of some positive change and and it's the will of this community. I'd be honored to do it again. So just wanted to make that public knowledge. That's all. Make their November. You all gonna have, Daisy gonna have to coach me up on all that, so I don't miss deadlines, so.
Two positions, one and five. Me and that guy.
For the record, my seat's one, right? Like, I'm in the number one seat. If not, we need, I might run for the one seat.
I might be running for Jason's seat. We might run for each other. He thinks I could have done better. I think he could have done better, so we might. I'm gonna piggyback on him, and it's been an honor to serve as well, and I look forward to hopefully trying to do this for four more years if it's the will of the people in this district. And I've enjoyed getting to know everybody, and the water system is a whole lot more complicated than people know. And I have, I don't know if you saw, there's been some chirping in Laguna Vista when we had the water shortages. So I posted several next door Facebook comments, trying to explain to them where that's coming from. We were, when you were gone last week, Carlos was trying to put together a revised memorandum for the community that made it a little bit more clear for people, because they what do you mean I have to stand outside at night watering my yard by hose? So I think we cleared those things up, and they were, they were happy. When people just turn on their water, they don't know where it comes from. The government does it, and it's a little bit more complicated than that, so. What do you mean? I thought the government gives us electricity. There's the same thing there?
Wait a minute.
Moving on to, does that conclude item three? Let's move to item four, consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from July 13, 2022.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Water, second by Mr. Starky, or all those in favor? They are any opposed? None? Motion carries? Thank you. Item five, consider remove from the table the following item table that the regular meeting on July 13. Consider discuss for possible approval of resolution adopting and addendum to the Director's Personnel Policy.
Some of it.
Motion made by, that's Dr. Lulon.
Second.
By Mr. Starky, or all those in favor? They are any opposed? None? Motion carries? Thank you. Take this to item six. Consider and discuss for possible approval of resolution adopting an addendum to this district's personnel policy resolution number 193-07-2022. So I know Carlos.
I would recommend to take no action and move it out.
Great. And I just, because I was kind of like behind that, I just feel like the employees of this district deserve a little bit of the thought process behind it, which was, you know, we've, we've done what I feel like are some, some good compensation adjustments since we came on board here a couple of years ago, and I think caught you guys up in some good ways. But we've done it in pieces, and I feel like, just personally, as an elected representative of the community, that if we're gonna continue to do it, that I do it in the same responsible way I would for my own employees, which is, let's look at a total compensation package together. How does the federal holidays, the personal holidays, the CPI adjustments, the yearly, all those things? How do those all fit together into one compensation package and just do it in maybe a little bit more responsible way? Because in my mind, this is belt tightening times, you know, where we have to be responsible about, about things like that. I'm sure everybody does that in their own house, you know, when we see inflation like this. I think it's, it's the only responsible way to do it as a board is to approach it in the same way. So just like my wife says she needs something, hey, we gotta look at this in the whole budget, not just this little piece of it. So I'd be happy to serve on an ad hoc committee to kind of look at that and put a good picture together and make sure that our district employees are being compensated fairly. And really, I don't look at it like what are other people getting paid? I look at it as like, do we think this is fair based on where we are? You could give me 100 different places or no different places, you know? At the end of the day, it's what you guys here think is important, not what my buddy in Brownsville is getting or somewhere else. So that's how I would look at it. That's, that's what my thinking was, but we'll communicate it. I know we won the challenge to get the chance, but I'll make sure we take the time to do that going forward here.
And piggyback on those. Thank you, Dr. Lulon. Just for the record, you know, Mr. Lulon, Carlos, I think you did exceptional job of communicating the importance, trying to facilitate an opportunity for us to meet proud of this meeting to represent as the whole, you know, you've been a fine leader, you know, you lead from the front. I think it's important that this team knows that you've always had their back, especially with this instance. And despite the tragic circumstances you were dealing with personally, you know, so I want to commend you for that type of leadership. So sorry we couldn't, you know, accommodate yesterday, but I think Dr. Lulon, myself, and this entire board are both willing to look at this objectively and make what we feel is the best decision for the whole.
Yes.
Say that publicly.
Yes, appreciate all that said, and we'll continue moving forward. Just want to thank you guys for at least holding off, and I, as I said, I respect y'all's decision and we'll move forward and continue to work together. That's how it is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So that, no action we're taking on this, and it takes it off. Next, item seven, consider and discuss for possible approval of November 8, 2022, general election for Board of Directors membership of the Board of Directors. By the Cameron County Elections Department.
On this one, Chairman and members of board, it's the agreement between the good moderator and the Elections Office at Cameron County. So they do our elections for us, and they bring the machines and take care of everything for us. And this, this is a contract, is amount is in there. And I believe that's only like a deposit of $15,675 for the, to make sure that they start off in the right way, and then the rest of the funds that are, they make adjustments and whatnot. It could be less than 26,000 altogether. It could be a little more, because according to their estimates, sometimes little things change, and so we'll just, the rest of the second payment will come back and I'll present it to the board.
Second. Motion made by Dr. Lulon, seconded by Mr. Starky, or all those in favor? They are any opposed? None? Motion carries? Thank you. Item eight. Consider and discuss possible revision to the water conservation and drought contingency plan for the district. Question that came up to me is where did this come from? We, do we come up with the drought contingency plan or they're state mandated things that have to happen? Where's it come from?
Part of it is, is a state mandated, and some of this we produced ourselves, because all the entities will start doing the same conservation measures at 25% levels, and then if it drops to 15, it's more restrictions on it. But it's been around for a while, and we have to notify TCQ when we do those restrictions. So actually, the state requires us to do a drought management plan and even an emergency plan, like for hurricanes and all that. Mandated, and we just have to supply them. If there's any addendums or anything added to it, we send it back to them and they revise it, make sure that we're doing what they request.
So our drought contingency plan, that by state?
That's correct. And the Texas Water and Board does the same thing.
I have some experience with the state, like telling me by phone, like, oh, you can do that. And then, and then later on, they show up and say, you didn't do it the right way, the way that we mandate you do it. It's like, well, we talked about it, and they're like, you don't care. So I just want to make sure that you guys feel comfortable with where we're coming from, with we're meeting the goals from above. They'll never come back. If you like, you owe us a half million dollars in excess water. You shouldn't have let people use, like, things like that. But now on that road where they asked, we didn't expect, right? Like, wasn't that four million bucks a couple of years ago, right? But they.
That was Water Tower, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, well, anytime it goes to the state, it's. Anyways, that's it. I'm comfortable. I don't see the wording in here, so what are we supposed to figure or not?
Yeah, I mean, we really need more time to prepare a final water conservation plan that would have a resolution. So, I mean, this.
I saw one that was completed.
Well, well, because basically, like in terms of, there's a lot of language from, because you know, this document's been something modified for the past 10, 20 years. And so we really, we really need more time before we have finalized, like updating their utility profile, kind of reviewing it, and so rather than.
Then we can approve the agenda to provide something to back it up.
I guess it's just a, just.
Yeah, well. Possible revision.
Yeah, because right now, we do have, we did issue the public notice that was modified. It's, it's not the same language that's in our current water conservation. But rather than, than piecemeal it, we'd rather get all the revisions in for a single request that a future meeting.
So if you'd like a motion to proceed with revising it, we could certainly do that if that would make you more comfortable.
That would be more comfortable.
Great. So I would motion that we proceed with revisions to the drought policy and represent effect us, just like a look at it, make sure we're in the right place. Yes. Second motion made by Dr. Lulon, seconded by Mr. Scott, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Item nine, district engineers report.
So the first item is a status on Long Island Village water and sewer improvements. And you know how we were submitted our, through our projects, water sewer that had submitted our project information forms with Texas Water Development Board, wanting to get that potential grant funding. And they did release their intended use plans. We saw them on Monday this week. And both projects do qualify for 70% disadvantage, and I think the water side got a million dollars in project reserves, a green project. But the problem with that is the, they have an initial invited list, or, you know, they only have enough money to get the top scoring projects, and neither of these are on that list. So, so Long Island Village is not going to get an invitation on this first round of projects to apply for any grant funding opportunities to that effect. So that, that's pretty much the outcome of what the draft intended use plan said. As far as, I believe on the sewer side, we ranked 38th, and about the top 25 are the ones who are going to be on the initial invited list. And on the water side, a rank about 73 range, and it's about the top 19 that have made the funding. So, so pretty much our path forward is to find other means. And in the area or the bank, North American Development Bank is who we're talking to. And as it is, we, we wanted to do an initial loan to get engineering started, because the interest rates rising, we need to get something sooner than later. But now, since we've got the results on this draft intended use plan, rather than doing kind of this initial request, we're probably at the point of requesting the entire project through that, the North American. So that's. Yeah, 20.8 million was, yeah, it'd be the full amount. And so that's probably our path forward. We're already working with a financial advisor and the bank. We're gonna probably schedule a program call towards the end of this week to get that passed forward, going if if that's consistent with the district or the board is, is okay with this proceeding. So that's, that's basically where we're at with Long Island Village.
We wanted to advise the board first before we approach them and advise what's happening.
Our financial advisor's not on the line today, but I assume he's on board with this.
Right, yes. Yeah, and so, so I know when I wrote this, I was gonna start requesting qualifications to meet the federal requirements. But with that being, we may not have to go through that process. We could simply start negotiating the contract with Mr. Greenwood in, since they were already hired through the Long Island Village Association. Right now, we're checking if, as long as they follow their own rules for procurement, we should be getting a response from that thing, whether or not we even have to do an RQ, or if we can just proceed with the contract.
With that in mind, this potentially could have a negative impact on our lead time.
Yeah, it might accelerate. I mean, right now, our goal is to get some kind of a debt service approved by September and implement the tax rate this coming fiscal year, to already start the debt or the process for this Long Island Village. Yeah, well, this will let us go faster. I mean, by not having to have all those hoops with the state revolving plan. I mean, we can just already move it with that being, there's no subsidized interest, no grants, but it's gonna be faster.
Sounds like a lot of advantages. What are the disadvantages?
Well, disadvantages is no subsidized interest rate. Right now, the interest rates are around the 4% range. So that's pretty much, and there'll be no loan forgiveness on the table.
That's increase. Today. Today, but one September, three months. It can be every month, but September, I don't think they're meeting in August.
Right, so that's what we're trying to say.
It's gonna go up.
Yeah, so we start manage to move it quick and lock it. Right, well, that's our passport with Long Island Village. And then, I guess the update for water plant one, we're at the 60% design. Think, you know, we kind of understand elevated storage tank, it's expected to advertise in late August for construction. Water plant one improvements, we're expecting to have in October. And, you know, as far as the, you expect cost overruns on these projects beyond our, our funds in the tax fund. And so as far as alone, you know, we can be able to get that through open market, that's not something we'll have to pursue through that thing, that could probably be pretty cut and dry with doing us requests through TCQ District殊队team, the way we've already done the existing tax one, and except have the revenue to support the cost of it. So that's, that's our task to get that project. And then distribution, of course, they're at the hardest part in front of the AP substation. And that bypass line should be tied in by the end of next week, even though we had one more contractor break our 16-inch Bridge Point. So, you know, that, and then a big part of the job is, once this bypass is in place, right now, the contractor's sitting on, you know, $500,000 worth of valves that still need to be installed. So all these improvements are still going to be ongoing over the next couple of months, getting our distribution system improved, improvement isolation, you know, minimizing areas that are getting cut off when incidents like this happen. So that's gonna be ongoing over the next few months. And then, you know, lift station, we have, from a contract time standpoint, they were supposed to be done August 9. But with all the delays and materials, we're still trying to get submissions for lift station components. So that job's gonna run much longer than their, their construction schedule. And at this point, they're 20% complete in terms of actual structure or, you know, material that's been in the ground installed. But, you know, my opinion, they're doing good work. I mean, they're doing some asphalt paving repairs as we speak by the parking lot, and then all that part settled. There were some, you know, when we negotiated easement, there was some additional paving. We were gonna do in exchange for that. So we had a, got that proposal. We're planning to just cover that cost, you know, in response to the action we took when we approved these. So that's basically how we're taking care of the pasture height or that easement required by the church. But that's basically the main updates for the lift station. Unless there's any other questions there. Yeah, yeah, the last one's the facilities master plan. And basically, we did a, we dove into more detail, especially at this warehouse and lift station construction facilities. We got, we went through some extra iterations, got a lot of more detailed input in the, with operations than what the original budget was scheduled for. So basically, we're getting a more detailed facilities master plan in order, but there is some additional costs that was associated with that. So, so basically, there's an action item to amend some additional time for the architects. Action item, basically, they're, they're requesting an additional 12,500 to finish up this facilities master plan. But at the same time, being that we're finding some good avenues to move on our administration facilities and improvements sooner than later. I think it's money we'll spend, we're starting to tie down, you know, our master planning efforts for admin and operations. And so that's basically where we're at. And that concludes the engineer's work. Other questions?
We're doing a, a long-term water reclamation project, right? It's not de-salination.
Well, yeah, the, that, that would be the work that we did, that feasibility study with reclamation, advanced water treatment. Right now, we completed the sewer plant for the secondary treatment part of work that was all done 2017, 2018. And we're pretty much at a standstill until we push the trigger or pull the trigger on the next phase of designing that advanced water treatment facility.
That's a lot.
Right. So that, that would be, I think, that does need to happen. It can't just sit. But it's a matter of, you know, taking the steps to get that. That's what's happening.
I'm still in favor of that, especially getting these.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, I remember sitting on, listening to Scott say, we're never, or raise the issue that we could run dry and we think we're never. Here like this makes me think.
Yeah, yeah, and I happen to.
For the record, I've always thought Scott knew.
Yeah, yeah, well, it was pretty amazing. Actually, I took a trip up to California, went to the Orange County groundwater replacement system, first week of July. And I mean, they've been doing that since the, since the early 70s, started at 5 NGD. They're about to do an expansion from 70 to 100 million gallons per day. They're pumping 30 million gallons per day to stop the saltwater intrusion into the offer, and then 70 million gallons is going back up to replenish the set.
So that's, that's a word, fancy word, reclamation.
Replant water, yes. Yeah.
What's their percentage there? Is it 20% too? I think that's a weird shoot.
Oh, and their recovery? Oh, I'm not sure, but it's the same process. Like as far as macrofiltration, reverse osmosis, UV disinfection, their process that's in use over there is the same layout.
That we're. Okay, great.
Yeah, the only difference is we don't have an aquifer to work with. We just have to stick to surface water, but it's the same concept.
Yeah, and their water flows downhill.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I, I was out there my whole life. It's different how they, how they get their water, because, you know, stuff like that go to the ocean, ours are big pools.
Yeah, and 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 pretty much, it takes six months from the the plain water uh to purply down to the aquifer and get pumped out. But all they do on the, on the treated water side is they block the aquifer, uh, ornate and get rid of the distribution system.
So I think everybody on this board is is in favor of continuing to support with that.
It's kind of been pretty prevalent everywhere in the future. It's the, it's, it's what's ahead for most of most communities.
Yeah, I I feel like the sooner we do it, the less we will be battling with other, the other districts who also want to do it, you know what I mean? So uh, we're, we're the last stop, right? One of the last stops on the Rio brand.
Yeah, and I think it makes sense. I mean, uh, with reclamation, there's opportunities out there. We do need to, I think we should amend that feasibility plan to move the site from Laguna Vista to Port Isabel, because we need both of these pipelines to be uh to get that raw water to uh Port Isabel, now that that's where it's going, we're gonna get a mid-sized facility in PI. So our advanced treatment should just stay circulating here in Port Isabel.
Carlos, I'd love to see that come back, you know, because when we retire, we could call it the Carlos Delva. So anyway, something that, something that please keep a little board on, you know, bring us up, let us see what we can do.
Yeah, so I guess that concludes the uh engineer's report.
Thank you, Charles. Let's carry item ten, consider and discuss for possible approval of amendment number one for the facilities master plan with recent.
So moved.
Eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of amendment to master agreement for professional services with recent nickel.
Right, yeah, on this one, our procurement policy states professional agreements to be for three years, and that three years elapsed with recent nickels. The original contract was approved March uh twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, so we're just requesting uh to uh start a three-year approval extension starting today.
Second, motion made by Dr. LaLance, seconded by Mr. Starkey, all those in favor.
Aye.
Item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval of quarterly investment reports for the quarter ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Quarter ended March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and quarter ended June thirty, twenty twenty-two.
So I've been uh giving the board um uh updates, investment updates, uh as we make uh changes to to our investments. Uh, but I had uh failed to give the the reports, the quarterly reports, so I'm trying to correct that by giving you uh all three uh reports uh all at once. As you can see, the uh basically in December, the uh, the, the yield that our portfolio was making was uh point zero nine. Uh, in March, that went up to uh point one four, and in June, it was uh point eight three. Uh, so it's, it's slowly uh climbed.
Yeah, we went from making four thousand to forty-seven, forty-seven thousand, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it is. We need to accept it.
You too.
Motion to accept or approve.
For approval uh by Dr. LaLance, seconded, seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor. Thank you. Thirteen, consider and discuss possible approval of the financial report from May twenty-two. That gets a look at these. That's correct. Knowledge by Mr. Donahue, Mr. Starkey, Mr. Fregman, Dr. LaLance, and Mr. Water, all parties acknowledged. Let's move on to item fourteen, consider and review the expenditures from July first, twenty twenty-two through July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Knowledge expenditures. Mr. Water, Dr. LaLance, Mr. Fregman, Mr. Starkey, and Mr. Donahue, all acknowledged. Fifteen, consider and remove from the table the following executive session item under section five five one zero seven four, personal matters table that the regular meeting on July thirteenth, twenty-two. Deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employees to with general manager. Motion to take this off the table. Motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Water, all those in favor. They are, item is off at the table. Item sixteen, executive session permitted by the open meeting that we can see a government code section five five one zero zero one. That sequence under section five five one zero seven four, personal matters, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employees to with general manager. We're going to get this done today. Need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. LaLance, seconded by Mr. Starkey, for all those in favor. They are, we are in executive session at uh six oh six P. Uh, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employee to with general manager. Uh, action to be taken is advancement to the next step level as uh as
two point five.
As addressed in our, in our step system, is what we're doing. Uh, so I need a motion to
So moved.
In this meeting, a motion to pass this by uh Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Dr. LaLance, for all those in favor.
Aye.
They are, they are none opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. That adjourned this meeting at six forty-five P M.